We'll apologize for being late. Our closed session went a little bit long. We're doing some good, still doing good government business, so we're going to call ourselves out of closed session.
I move that this council certified by a recorded vote that to the best of each council member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion convening the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session.
Second.
Second. Okay. Is everyone up to vote electronically?
I am not.
Okay, so will all in favor please say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Okay, so we will now have a, oh, we will read the appointments for the retirement committee and for the SPCA board.
Yes, we've appointed Ben Cullup. He's been, this is for the retirement commission. He's been reassigned to the community member city resident position for a term beginning July 1st, 2025. And we've appointed Mr. Chris Cullen, our city director of finance, to be our representative to the SPCA board.
I think that that needs to be a motion from you.
I move that we appoint Ben Cullup to the retirement commission and Chris Cullen to the SPCA board.
I'll second you.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Okay, the pass is five to zero. We will now have a moment of silence. Thank you all very much. The next item, do we have any announcements that, okay?
Hang on, I gotta pull it up. So if someone else has another one, they can go first. Was there a tennis thing you wanted to talk about?
No. We're gonna do that in the fall.
Oh.
Right, but we did, we.
We can recognize it.
Yeah, we would like to acknowledge that the Charlottesville Boys Varsity Tennis Team won state championship, and we are planning to have them here in September, or as soon as we can when the school starts to officially recognize them. But they have won, I think, two years in a row.
Yep.
Yeah, so it's an amazing team that they have there, so.
And then mine, thank you for your patience, is this, never mind. It's already happened.
Okay.
Pardon me.
Okay, so now we're at the first opportunity for community members. We have opportunities for 16 people to speak. We have had eight to already sign up to speak for these slots. And you have three minutes. If you give your name and your address or where you live. The first one is Bill Atwood.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Even though they only come once a decade nowadays, I wanted to talk a little bit about the 50th anniversary of the mall coming up. And more specifically, 30 years ago this month, as a result of a mall that wasn't working for 15 years, there was a bit of a storm centered on the fact that the city council had created a special tax district to pay for someone to come in and tell us how to make the mall work. And as a result of that, there was a large collection of people called the Downtown Charette, which I think is mentioned there. And they did a hell of a job as volunteers. At that time, we didn't, we allowed the stakeholders to be involved, a little bit of process, but we enlisted users. So we actually brought in the county people as well as the city people, and began to analyze what we thought could happen better in the city. One of the more drastic things, amazing today to look back, is Water Street and Marcus Street were one way. So really, you're driving around the mall. If you missed your spot, you could go continue driving around the mall. Changed that to two ways. Also, there was a much stronger sense of children activity safety. There was a sense of the longer away, the longer, farther away, the longer you stayed. A lot of really strong practical solutions done. And looking forward, I think would be a great idea, given that ended up being a public-private partnership that was successful for 10 years. And the mall, as the mall got itself on foot, Omni's big, now the mall has changed. And we need to react to that change, and users can do that fast. So we would suggest that you consider another type of charette with volunteers coming from the city and county, which always show up, always give their ideas, and do a good job of follow-up. So that's, I'm here with my daughter Kate, who was 10 years old when we did the last one. And I think she's still emotionally wild. See, thanks.
Thank you. The next speaker is Catherine Atwood.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
My name is Kate Atwood, and in these.
My name is Kate Atwood, and in these parts, better known as Bill's daughter. But I actually grew up in Charlottesville and have just returned after 25 years of being away. I've come back with a deep love for this city and also an experience of helping other cities grow with intention through change. And upon coming back to Charlottesville, I just was really able to reconnect to the downtown mall and really the heartbeat of the city as the great opportunity that awaits this town and its residents for change that is inevitable. When I was in Atlanta, I led an initiative called Choose ATL, which was a nationally-recognized initiative, economic development, that allowed the city to reimagine its identity for the next generation. And through that work, I come back here really with this reverence to see the same thing happen. I think Charlottesville, like many communities across our nation, is at a turning point, and I always see that as a great opportunity to pull from wisdom from the past, to re-center the community's voices in what the lived experience is today and what we can reimagine for tomorrow, much like my father did 30 years ago with the shiret. So I'm just here to offer my support, my expertise, as we drive this wonderful city forward, and also just to commend you all for showing up and for doing the work that you do to lead this great city. So thank you so much, and I would love to see Charlottesville reach its great potential that I've known ever since I was a little girl, running up and down the downtown mall, going to, I was the first grade to go to middle school at Walker and then Buford, and then graduated from the University of Virginia. So thank you for your steadfast leadership, and if I can be of any support, let me know. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and welcome back.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Harold Foley.
Madam Clerk, or.
Send a message to Remy, and I'll turn on this one a little. Let me know when it says three minutes. Okay.
Right. Hello, Mayor Wade, Vice Mayor Piston, and city council members. My name is Harold Foley, I live in Charlottesville, and I'm a member of the People's Coalition. I'm here today with a simple question. Why is the city council voting to approve participating in a bond sale for a jail expansion when we don't even know what the scope is or how much it really costs? Right now, the jail authority is asking the city to commit money, a lot of it, without showing the city or the public a full scope of work. And from what we do know, the lowest bid on the table doesn't even fit within the $49 million budget. So why are we rushing forward? If a fifth grader had heard this, they would say, wait, you paying for something you don't even know fully the price of, and you're not even sure what's going, what you're going to get? That's what a fifth grader would say. That's exactly how this is filled. Charlottesville should not be writing a blank check for a project that lacks transparency, accountability, especially when there are so many other urgent needs in our community: housing, mental health care, school, and real safety solutions. Please do not approve participating in a bond sale for a jail expansion until you have a full scope, a real budget, and the public has a chance to weigh in on the reverse, the revised scope. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, sir. The next speaker is Cherry Henley.
I'm sorry, I was going to take my time to miss moving in.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of city council. My name is Ruby Cherian, and I'm an attorney at Legal Aid Justice Center and a member of the People's Coalition. I'm here today to speak about the proposed jail expansion funding. As others today will note, we cannot ignore how decisions made at the federal level directly impact us here at the local level. The so-called Big Beautiful Bill has passed the U.S. House and is now headed to the Senate. As my colleague Majestah Doree wrote in the Richmond Times-Dispatch, "This proposed bill is an outright attack on people in poverty." It includes devastating cuts to essential programs like Medicaid and SNAP. It would require the Virginia Department of Social Services, or DSS, to process Medicaid expansion renewals every six months, hogging down an already strained system. It would impose work requirements for Medicaid and free SNAP benefits while grocery prices continue to increase. But what does that mean for us here in Charlottesville? It means that many Virginians, roughly 25% of whom will rely on Medicaid and SNAP, can lose access to critical support. You'll hear from Rosia Parker that Region 10 alone stands to lose 3.2 million in Medicaid funding. Naturally, when federal and state supports disappear, people will look to their local governments to help them meet their basic needs like food, housing, and health care. When the federal funding is slashed, state budgets and local budgets inevitably feel the strain. At a time when our resources will be stretched even thinner, we must prioritize the services our community truly needs, not a jail expansion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Kate.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Kate Fraley. I live in Charlottesville, and I'm part of the People's Coalition. You will be voting tonight to approve or not to approve the funding resolution for the Almar Charlottesville Regional Jail Renovation and Expansion Project. The project was estimated to cost $49 million with interest. It would cost $73 million. You were scheduled to vote on this on June 2nd, but at the last minute, the agenda item got pulled. The stated reason for postponing the vote was because all the bids came in over the $29 million funding plan, and it was stated that ACRJ needed time to redesign the project. Nothing has changed. The jail hasn't figured out what to cut. Now the project parameters will be decided by the ACRJ Board at their July meeting. You are being asked to approve the funding plan without knowing what it'll pay for. We have some hints, though. Superintendent Kummer explained at the ACRJ Board meeting last week that the demolition, new construction, and new square feet, including the 14 new, quote, "mental health," unquote, special purpose segregation cells, will be prioritized. That means the renovation plans will be postponed. This is a bad plan. The project started some five years ago as a renovation project. Now it's demolition, construction, and expansion. You need to know what you're paying for. Whatever renovation work they cut, it will still have to be done and paid for by taxpayers in the future. If you vote yes tonight, you are agreeing to pay for postponed renovation costs in the future. Vote no tonight.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ms. Parker.
I am Rosia Parker, and I'm a member of People's Coalition. I'm coming to you on behalf of the people for the people. Mental health is not simply the absence of mental illness. Psychological well-being is very important to this community, as we watch this cycle continue with mistreatment of mental health individuals. Due to this Big Beautiful Bill, if passed, Region 10 Community Services estimates it will lose around $3.2 million for Medicaid funding, which will leave so many people in crisis, such as our unhoused Black and Brown citizens, will be more affected. As a mental health advocate, as well as having mental illness myself, I look at this proposed mental health unit as being solitary confinement. No one can get well in a cell such as this. The environment is not healthy. Mental health is not chosen, it is an illness that affects many. With this Big Beautiful Bill and Trump's administration awaiting a decision, I have a question for you. Will the city of Charlottesville have empathy, compassion, and humanity to fill in the gap of the Big Beautiful Bill reduction, or build a Big Beautiful Jail in its place?
Thank you. The next speaker is Javier Raudales.
Steamed members of the Charlottesville City Council, my name is Javier Raudales. I serve as the new executive director of Sim Barreras Without Barriers, a nonprofit organization that has worked for over a decade to empower, educate, and advocate for the immigrant community of the Charlottesville area. I'm speaking to you today about our deep concerns regarding the current trial and proposed continuance of Flock safety cameras in our city. We understand that the intent of these cameras to enhance public safety, but their use raises serious issues about privacy of our fellow residents, the community and community members, civil liberties of all our neighbors, and we are convinced, we are concerned of the potential disproportionate harm that may cause the immigrant community in our area. Our immigrant neighbors, many of who are from mixed-status families, undocumented members, live under heightened surveillance with a persistent fear of interaction with the law enforcement. The automated collection of license plate data through Flock Safety can pose a serious safety threat. Despite claims that this technology will be used for local testing, the reality is is that our community needs an insurance that policy would be in space to not have this information shared with Virginia law enforcement. A major potential here is that the already discussed policy around Virginia law enforcement using this information could permit city data to be used through 287G agencies for collaboration with ICE on immigration law enforcement functions. The immigrant community has experienced in the last decade multiple instances in which government entities and private companies have at first assured that our public data is being collected on sensitive communities will not be used to target those same vulnerable communities. The last six months have shown that through various headlines, that these means of collecting data have been weaponized to harm the immigrant community despite previous assurances that this information is safe to share. We urge the city council to halt use of Flock safety cameras in the Charlottesville area. I urge you to stand with the Charlottesville immigrant community and reject these tools that threaten our rights, our safety, and our dignity. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hicks. Good evening.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and city council members. My name is Earl Hicks, and I am a Charlottesville resident with the People's Coalition. I am here because I am concerned about the direction we're headed with the possibility of federal funding cuts. I worry that we've been asked to cut critical services like mental health care, Medicare, and food stamps, and housing, that would be like robbing Peter to pay Paul. People in our community are facing real crisis. Mental health support is already stretched to its limits. If we shift even more resources away from care and into incarceration, we are not solving problems, we are making them worse. Please don't sacrifice what we need most to fund what we don't. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we have the opportunity, that was the last of the eight speakers that pre-registered. We have opportunity for eight more who would like to speak. Alicia.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name, excuse me, is Alicia Lenahan, and I live in the county. On Saturday, the better angels of our community were on full display. Even as news of the political shootings in Minnesota broke, Senator Warner was here. We asked hard questions and didn't agree with all his answers. There was respectful discourse, and it was peaceful. Even as this administration rewrites history and seeks to re-elevate Robert Lee and others like him, the Jefferson School campus overflowed commemorating Juneteenth, a day that recognizes the end of slavery by celebrating, educating, and agitating peacefully. Even though the governor activated the National Guard in an attempt to intimidate us and stifle free speech, thousands gathered at Stonefield, uniting in the great nonviolent tradition of those who came before us. As Reverend William Barber said in Philadelphia, "We have learned through this nation's," and I would add, "this community's painful struggles, struggles that have taught us we either go forward together or go backwards divided. Our demonstration of moral strength is in opposition to actions that threaten this country, this community, and each of us." The backlash has begun. The administration is loudly doubling down on the largest mass deportation operation in history. Our immigrant and refugee neighbors deserve sanctuary and need safety. Take courage. Stand against demonization and racism. The budget bill is being debated by the Senate. Call a press conference. Explain how many children and families will go hungry right here. Explain how many people will lose health care right here. Take courage. Stand against the cruelty of this legislation. The administration is still gathering and consolidating your personal data, my personal data, our personal data, so it can exert power and control. Take courage. Stand for our right to privacy. Say no to peregrine and flock. Every elected official, every law enforcement agency, and every resident of Charlottesville must counter the narrative of violence, greed, and corruption coming from the administration and its supporters. These aren't political positions, they are moral positions. Focus on an agenda that lifts us all to a higher ground. We must join hands across the lines that have been drawn to divide us and stand together. We are the strength of America, and we will not stand down.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? I'll get you next.
My name is Reverend Karen Mann. I'm pastor of Soderner's United Church of Christ. Thanks for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you all again. First, I wanted to say thank you for the responses you've already provided to community member inquiries regarding immigration. I was pleased to hear that CPD officers have been advised to request identification and the purpose of actions taken by federal agents in our community. I'm also pleased to hear that confirmation that the city does not participate in ICE enforcement or have a 287G agreement. We need to be doing all that we can as a community to safeguard all of our neighbors, regardless of their immigration status. Like Alicia, I'm concerned that given President Trump's escalation of rhetoric around immigration and the deployment of both National Guard and Marines in Los Angeles, that we may soon see increased ICE activity in our community or our surrounding communities. As we know, the Trump administration is going after everyone they can, including hard-working, longtime residents of our communities. People are being disappeared without due process, leaving behind families and communities, and leaving them reeling in loss and trauma. President Trump's post last night indicates an even heavier emphasis on mass deportations that will terrorize these communities. While he stated that he's specifically targeting cities much larger than ours, there's no reason to believe that he won't also come after communities like ours, and we need to be prepared now as a community. Not having a 287G agreement and not participating in ICE enforcement is a great first step, but things like Flock and peregrine are extremely concerning. As others have noted tonight and in previous meetings, these surveillances. meetings, these surveillance and data collection systems are being used by federal immigration authorities to identify and track immigrants and other persons of color, and racial profiling and targeting that they enable are a grave concern to our community. I'm also concerned, along with others here, about the plans to expand the jail. My church's justice and advocacy ministry supports the position of the People's Coalition. The folks here have spoken eloquently and passionately against the jail and expansion, and in favor of real solutions to address the limits of access to mental health care in our community and the renovation needs of the jail without adding more segregation cells. I also worry about the potential for an expanded jail to be used and/or commandeered by federal agents in holding detained immigrants. So I join the People's Coalition in asking you to devote no on funding the jail expansion, and I encourage you, as Javier said, to halt the city's use of Flock and peregrine. We're not living in normal times anymore. We need to do more as a community, more, to protect and safeguard and care for all of our neighbors.
Thank you. The gentleman in the red shirt?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
And what I'm here to speak about is not as large with the community as everybody else is that's speaking. I'm here more to speak for the members, uh, the residents who live at Kendallwood Apartments. My name is Richard Bard. I've been living there for about eleven months, and we've, I came here a couple months ago to indicate some issues that we're having within the building. I can finally say that after four months, we're down to our third garage door. Uh, it's taken four, uh, four months to get the first two fixed, so we're now there. But we've had cars vandalized, uh, we've had issues with people coming into the building, sleeping on couches. We had one man who lived in our, one of the restrooms in our lobby for five days, and it wasn't until one of our housekeepers found him in the morning. We had people dragging trash through our carpeting in our building. We're already on our second carpeting phase of the entire building. We have a, an exercise room that's been vandalized. We haven't been able to use it for over two months. And when you speak to the community people in the management office, we ask, "Why aren't you able to find these people?" They give us every answer. But on Tuesday, when we had our community meeting, we found out the real answer is that the video cameras in our building are not used to prevent crimes or mischief. They're not to identify anybody that does anything. They're quote, "in case of an emergency." They don't, they don't have funds set aside for anybody to review any actions. If I go to them and say, "On Tuesday at five o'clock, this happened," nobody goes and looks at it. Nobody monitors them, even though our security group, we have a security team, and I don't like the fact that they're wearing guns in our buildings, but they actually have, have said that they would use the cameras, and we've not been allowed to. We have a couple of young men who have, all winter, their windows haven't closed. So this weekend, they were asking for people to go, give them towels because of all the rain coming in their windows. All winter, they had snow, freezing rain, and the cold. Nobody seems to fix it. Another gentleman came in on Tuesday, almost in tears. He and his wife, um, for the last six months haven't had heat or AC for themselves or their eighteen-month-old baby. Um, he did, he was gonna come with me tonight, and he didn't, so I'm hoping that means that his was fixed. Um, so again, we're supposed to be the model for the Garrett Square community, and if we're, they're just getting ready to double the size. If they can't manage our little townhouse community and our apartment, Kendallwood, how are they gonna double in size and may be able to maintain that? And I've reached out to people in Richmond, and everybody said, "Well, they've got the garage door fixed, so now they're moving forward." So the other thing is, I would like everybody listening here and the board members to look at the Department of Energy. Section 504 is about to be repealed, I believe it's July fifteenth, which now indicates that no more will a building with federal funding has to be accessible with, for people with disabilities. So I, I encourage anybody to go on that site and to talk to them about it, and try to figure out why is it that buildings cannot, don't have to be accessible for people with disabilities. We can have a forty-five million dollar pompous parade, but we can't build a wheelchair ramp. I don't understand. I also would like to pass, can I pass this to anybody? Um, I'd like to join one of the boards for, for, um...
Uh, Mr. Chief Cochran, so grab it.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. We, we definitely continue to have staff to, to look into that, to the matters over there. Um, we have opportunity for, um, what, five more speakers? I forgot where we were.
Five more.
Don? Good evening.
Um, I too come to rise and support the People's Coalition. And, uh, speaking against the, the jail expansion, or our funding of the jail expansion. Um, some two-hundred-and-fifty years ago, this country fought a war against the British for freedom. Around a hundred-and-sixty years ago, we fought an internal war, again, for freedom. Now, recently, we've had some monuments removed that were not expressive of freedom, and even UVA put up a memorial to enslaved laborers, folks who were captured and held hostage against their will. But now, we're still battling and discussing the enslavement of people because imprisonment equals slavery. Now, we just saw the would-be fury in DC throw forty-five million dollars away unnecessarily and senselessly, but now the city is apparently trying to one-up him by throwing away forty-nine million dollars senselessly and unnecessarily. Now, two of you face elections tomorrow. Those people who haven't voted are watching, watching to see what you do. Those who have voted are waiting to hear what you say. I ask and I urge you to do what's morally right and expedient. Those funds would be much better served going towards seeking mental health assistance, a valuable cure for homelessness in the city, or, dare I say, be seed money towards reparations. Please don't further the opportunities to bar freedom. Put the monies where it would be better utilized. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who else would like to speak? Chris?
All right. Good evening, councilors, staff. Chris Meyer, 124 Oaklawn Court, speaking in, uh, myself as a citizen resident. Uh, want to welcome the new city attorney. Uh, we haven't had one for a long time, uh, and happy to see you in place. A little concerned that we missed the filing on the zoning case, and, and I'm hoping, uh, that that will be taken care of. I know there's a lot of people who want to build more housing in this community, myself being one of them, and not having certainty that the zoning, uh, code and update is in place is very disconcerting. Uh, so I hope there's measures being taken place to basically solve that, and/or if that's not gonna be resolved or found in, in our favor, that, uh, you figure it out and pass it correctly, quickly. Uh, I want to make some comments also about Charlottesville Gas. Uh, you all are the board to Charlottesville Gas. I'm basically a shareholder as one of the residents. Really just, uh, concerned about some of the answers or lack of answers they gave at the last public hearing about the rate increase. Uh, Councilor Snook, I think you had a lot of good questions about how many people are joining, or new accounts are, are there, in addition to, uh, I think in the response to how much they charge for a new gas hookup of three-hundred-and-forty dollars, which I think a lot of us know is not the real cost. Um, that they've had twenty-three new hookups after that's passed, so if the whole idea of charging for a gas hookup is that we don't have more gas hookups, uh, I don't think that price is really working in addition to, I think we all know that's not the real cost. Uh, moving on to the carbon credits that we keep on buying each year, I think we're up to probably one-point-three, one-point-four million over the last five or six years that we spent to British Petroleum and other places rather than spend that money here locally. One-point-three, one-point-four million dollars, right, over the last five or six years, two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars a year, something like that. And again, over that same period of time, we only spent two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars weatherizing and doing energy efficiency work on low-income homes here. Uh, I am concerned that, I think as Mr. Payne, you mentioned, we're not decarbonizing, we're actually putting more carbon and locking in more accounts that are only gonna cost us more in the future. So, uh, I do hope you pull item off the gen- agenda, the consent agenda, excuse me, and maybe have us a little more discussion on it. You know, I think we had these same conversations over the last couple of years, and I don't think we're seeing change. I, my concern is, is that we're gonna sit here another year and not see a lot of change. Uh, I don't know if that's the utility that doesn't want to change. I don't know if it's, I think all of you want to see change, but I don't think we're unfortunately seeing a lot of progress in the direction we want to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. My name is Steve Herrick. I live in Albemarle County, and I want to speak to the immigration issue and ICE locally. What should we do if suddenly surrounded or see others surrounded by people in ordinary clothing who, without showing legal authorization, attempt to force us into a nondescript vehicle? For many years, I worked for an international human rights organization. I supported freedom worldwide, including those, that of those in countries like the Soviet Union and China. Their arrests were often like the scenario just described, and now niece have now recently occurred in Charlottesville. Self-defense training typically advises never to allow a random stranger to coerce you into a vehicle. In recent months, in multiple states, have been arrested for impersonating ICE. During arrest, ICE officers often misrepresent who they are, what, what legal authorization they have, or where they're taking the arrestee. Charlottesville is facing ICE conduct inconsistent with due process. This undermines public confidence in an inclination to be helpful to local law enforcement. I realize that city authorities do not control federal or state law enforcement. However, as local officials, you likely have more, far more influence than the rest of us. When ICE acts in ways that contravene due process, local authorities can formally protest, as some jurisdictions already have. Please use the city's prosecutorial discretion to decline to prosecute those who nonviolently challenge ICE officers when they fail to provide bona fide evidence of their specific authorization to arrestees before detaining them. Please also decline federal and state requests for city cooperation or use of city detention facilities unless the targeted person has been convicted of a violent crime and has an unfulfilled sentence. We live in the land of Jefferson and Madison. We need to ensure we act like it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have opportunity for two more speakers. Who?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Nina Seville. I live in the Belmont neighborhood of Charlottesville, and I'm here to support the People's Coalition against the regional jail renovation funds. I, um, I think that approving the money without a final scope or price is irresponsible, and, and it takes away all negotiating power. I mean, if there's anything that you do or don't want to see in this, you don't have an opinion once you've had, once you approve those funds. So I would say you absolutely should not approve it until after you know what you're approving. Um, next, I'm, I'm really concerned about these mental health beds. Um, I think they are woefully inadequate. They, uh, they are, um, they're seclusion beds until, until medication stabilizes the person, but that assumes that medication works. And it doesn't for every mental health issue, which means that people could be held in basically solitary confinement, which we know is really bad for mental health. So this can exacerbate problems and make them significantly worse. Um, we've seen, um, with, with the current administration, we've seen a rise, I'm sort of jumping around, but, uh, with the current administration, we've seen both a defunding of mental health, uh, and programs for the poor, and, and we're also seeing a rise in prices of raw materials because of tariffs. So we have no idea how expensive this is going to be, but we do know that we do need money for people at low income and who have mental health issues. So I'm asking you, please do not vote for this or participate in any way for something that could lead to the criminalizing of poverty and people with mental health.
Thank you. One more opportunity for one more person to speak?
Hi. Uh, my name is Seville Flynn. I'm a resident living in Carlton. Um, I've been hearing the People's Coalition speaking a lot, um, about all of this, and I just want to kind of add my voice. I work in climate justice on the local level, um, listening to all of their testimony, listening to their input, their expertise, their, their awareness, their, their relationship with, um, the expand, the jail expansion. Uh, can't help but to be struck by some of the connections when I think about the city's finances and how it's prioritizing different financial decisions. Funding, uh, jail expansion without understanding the scope of the final cost, not leading with renovations that actually would benefit people who may, you know, for whom we want more humane, uh, conditions, um, considering surveillance technologies that handshake with a racist anti-immigrant federal agenda, continuing the slow squeeze on especially poor renters by, uh, who are forced to use gas by continually increasing gas rates without first identifying how it's gonna affect them. Um, all of these things, as was just said, they continue to criminalize poverty. This is something we need to be actively working against on our local level. We know that for a fact. I know all of you know that. All of us in this room here know that. How are we actually addressing this first? How are we considering the residents' needs, the people's needs? I don't want to be funding something that is criminalizing poverty and accommodating this agenda when that's not the values that any of us want to be leading with. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, that was the last speaker there, um, for this time. There'll be another opportunity at the end. We are now at the consent agenda.
Consent agenda, number two, resolution to appropriate two-hundred-sixty-six thousand three-hundred-eighty-seven dollars in FY twenty-four Meadow Creek Golf Course surplus funds, second reading. Three, ordinance to amend and reordain City Code Chapter thirty-one utilities to establish new utility rates and service fees for city gas, water, and sanitary sewer, second reading. Number four, resolution to allocate housing operations and support, or HOPS, FY twenty-six grant funding for affordable housing and homelessness support programs in the amount of four-hundred-sixty thousand five-hundred-seventy-four dollars, and this should be one of two readings. Number five, resolution authorizing hospital-to-home to operate as a non-emergency medical transport agency in Charlottesville.
Is there a motion to adopt the consent?
I actually have a quick question.
Yep.
About one of them on, for number three, which is the utility rate. Um, the carbon credits, that's not part of this section, right? That's not something we're voting on today, where the carbon credits go towards. That's...
No. That's an operational practice. That would be a different question.
A different discussion. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that wasn't part of today. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think when we got the update, we all had...
We, we all agreed, right. So that's why I wanted to make sure we weren't keeping going with what we were.
Yeah, that, that, we didn't want to continue doing that, yeah.
Yeah.
And I, on totally different issue, on item five, I'm just, at a high level, I'm curious. I know a lot of communities have had private ambulance services be very predatory in terms of the, um, pricing. Like, what is the, what's the benefit of allowing, you know, a private ambulance operator to, um, operate in the community?
To benefit the Charlottesville? This is a private entity that wants to do business into the city of Charlottesville, and by Office of OMS regulations, the governing body has the authority to allow them or disallow them, and they just, they want to function within the city. They would just be doing patient transports from the hospital to people's homes or Dallas's patients and things of that nature. They won't be part of the public safety.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm aware that they won't be part of like a nine-one-one call or anything like that. Um, and I guess, I don't know. I'm in a tough spot because I don't really know much about it or the industry. I just know there's a lot of issues... I just know there's a lot of issues, even in that non-9/11 response of people getting hit with a massive bill that insurance won't cover and being like surprised with it through these private services. And I'm just unclear whether we're kind of, if there's a clear public safety benefit to this or if we're just introducing a new risk that people get hit with a huge bill coming out from the hospital that they didn't realize this isn't covered by insurance and is a private for-profit company, but...
Actually, it's a private entity. It's a private business, and they contract with whoever they're going to do the service for.
So how would it, how would it work now if someone like needed a ride home from the hospital?
They would contract, we have UVA, Martha Jefferson in our jurisdiction, so they would contract with UVA and Martha Jefferson, and they would have the terms and conditions on taking the patients back and forth.
I mean, like, right now?
Most likely charging insurance and maybe a bill. I don't know their financial makeup because it's like this is a private entity. It has nothing to do with Charlottesville.
So right now, there's already some private entity that is contracting with those?
Yes, it's several private entities doing the same service.
And so this would just be another one in the roster of companies? And does the patient leaving get like a menu of people to choose from, or is it just whoever's up next?
That's a situation between the organization and the company contracts on that service.
Any other?
Thank you. I don't have any additional questions.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions? If not, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Second? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Great. So we're now at the city managers' report.
And this is, um, allowing that one to, to pass on, on one reading, correct?
The one that's supposed to have two?
Well, um...
Oh, number four?
Just adding that wording that you are allowing that to pass with just one reading.
For number four?
For number five.
Which one? Number four?
For number five.
Number five.
That you're okay with, with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the public. There's a scheduled presentation for Mr. Newmeyer in the Office of Human Rights, but I've asked Chief Koch just to come and give an update on a couple of matters, public safety-oriented specifically.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, city manager. I'm just going to give a quick, few, few quick updates. I want to start by speaking about the demonstrations this weekend and just giving major kudos to the organizations that put that on. I think they counted somewhere around 6,000 folks that showed up. I was in the command center, and I think it's a model on how, how these things really do go. And I couldn't be more proud of the community for stepping up and showing how to do this the right way. So thank you, especially to Indivisible Charlottesville, who, uh, who put this on and worked with us to make sure it was a peaceful event. So I want to thank them for that. Another event we have coming up this Friday, if you remember about a year and a half ago, this body passed an ordinance allowing us to do a gun buyback. And it was a priority set back then. State law requires that there be an ordinance that enables us to do this gun buyback. We put a lot into this, and the first one is going to be this Friday between 10:00 PM, I'm sorry, 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM, at Mount Zion, First African Baptist Church here in the city. And we're, we're looking forward to a successful event. It's going to be a gun safety and gun buyback event. So Moms Demand Action is going to be there working with us, handing out literature on safe gun ownership, responsible gun ownership, and then you can be, if you bring, if you bring your firearms, unwanted firearms, we will take them, no questions asked, no ID, and we will give you gift cards depending on what it is for them. So that's this Friday, so come on out. Yes.
If somebody is working during those hours but would still like to participate in the program, what is the best way for them to get in touch and follow through with that?
They can, they can reach out to me directly and, or, um, if they're working during those hours and they have like a firearm that they want to get destroyed or whatever, they can give it to someone else.
Right, like if they work a nine-to-five and can't make a 10-to-2 event?
They could give the firearms to someone else. And again, there's no questions asked. So if somebody could show up, they could put four or five firearms in their trunk and open it, we'll take them, give them the gift cards based on what kind of firearms they, uh, they have, and we'll destroy them, so.
All right, thank you.
Yep, absolutely. And then another thing is the, uh, the speed cameras. So we did our first week trial of that for over about 10 days. And over that time, we just gave out warnings, but in, uh, in that short period of time, there were 181 warnings issued. And so in the fall, those will be real tickets. It, we're, we're kind of using it to see what kind of capacity it takes for us as a police department because state law requires a police officer to look at every one of those tickets before they go out. And so we're working through that now, but, um, that, that's a lot. So, yes.
If that was a real ticket, how much would the charge for it be?
I believe it's a hundred dollars.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Just trying to calculate some revenue.
Yeah. Well, the General Assembly dispatched your past legislation beginning July 2026. Any revenue come, that comes from that has to go to the Literary Fund in Richmond.
Okay.
And then finally, I wanted to just talk briefly about the shootings that we've seen on the mall over the last week. We've had two shootings in a matter of seven days on the downtown mall. Our investigations preliminarily indicate, basically, you have a lot of individuals carrying firearms in establishments, drinking alcohol, um, some look like they may be overcrowded. And when they empty out around 1:40, 1:30 AM, emotions run high, and if you have firearms, and, uh, we've seen what's happened. So a few things we are doing, we are deploying more resources onto the mall, so you will see them in, in the evenings, especially on Friday, Saturday nights, when those establishments let out. And then we are working with our partners, with Alcohol Beverage and Control, to, um, you know, kind of figure out and work with those businesses, are there things, security measures they may be able to take to help them with? You know, I don't know those answers right now. We're still really looking into that. But working with business owners to make sure they're successful and that we can, uh, that have a safe environment for everyone to go out. And so we'll continue doing that. And I plan on meeting with those business owners, hopefully here in the next two weeks, to discuss those things as well, to let them know what we're doing and some recommendations that they may be able to take. So we can work together on making sure folks can go out and have a safe, safe time, so. With that, if there's any questions?
I just wanted to note that maybe about 10 years ago, um, on the corner, there was an incident. And at the Harris Cedar of Eric's Road, there was an incident with ABC officers getting a little too aggressive about their work. And so I just want to kind of put the notice out that we remember that and we want to make sure that they're being careful and fair.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Can you, FLOC and Peregrine?
What's that?
FLOC and Peregrine.
The two programs? Yeah, okay. So Peregrine, we are pausing Peregrine. We're not going to be using it at this point. We, we had a grant that was accepted by this body, but after hearing some things and some concerns, we're going to hold off on, on using Peregrine. And so as a result of that, there are some things, like I said, we cannot do. I've instructed Center for Policing Equity today that we won't be able to finish that work at this point. And then just a few other things. But, you know, maybe down the road, we can do it and, uh, and have other ways of doing those things, then we'll continue to, we'll, we'll look for those, um, solutions, so. Uh, FLOC, so right now, what we have done, and we are the only jurisdiction in the state, we have shut off access to our FLOC system to everyone. What does that mean? It means, in the past, our initial policy was that anyone outside the Commonwealth of Virginia and federal agencies would not have access to our system. They didn't. They haven't, never have. But states within Virginia still did.
Counties?
Was that? I'm sorry, states, counties and cities. Yes, I'm sorry. So the question around jurisdictions that have signed on to the 287G program, and those who may not know what that is, that is a federal program that allows local jurisdictions to do immigration enforcement. There are 13 of them in Virginia. Some of them are, are near here. And so because of that and the possibility that they could be doing enforcement with FLOC if they have access to it, we have also shut off to all, uh, all local jurisdictions within the Commonwealth of Virginia. Now, what does that mean? We don't have access to the state system. So if we're tracking a missing kid, a car, anything like that, we do not have, um, access to the state system to track that person or to track that car or locate that missing person. But we still can use it locally. And the shootings this past week, FLOC has been a key part in identifying those individuals involved in it, in both of those. And we continue to use it for, for those cases just locally, but we are not sharing it with any other jurisdiction. Any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for tailoring your response, you know. There's still a lot of people concerned about it. We've spoken tonight, which I appreciate and respect. But when people bring concerns to this body, into the city manager, and to you, y'all listen to it and try to tailor as appropriate. And not everyone will agree that this is perfect, but I think, you know, you're making thoughtful adjustments in the wake of the environment we're in, while still trying to keep a focus on solving these crimes.
And we'll continue to do that. We need, we, we will continue to listen to this community and the concerns this governing body has and our community has, and tailor our policy and practices what we do. And if it gets to a point where I, where I don't feel like I can protect the concerns of those in this community around this stuff, we won't use it anymore.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The comment one briefly on the, the question of the Peregrine system. A month ago, I sat up here and was frankly agonizing over how I, I wanted to come down on it. And I thought about it a lot more, and at that point, I guess it was three to two with not a lot of enthusiasm on the three in favor and two against. And I thought about it a lot more, and I started reflecting in particular on two things. One was the way things were going nationally. Uh, and the second was the realization that one of our tasks has to be to exercise our imaginations at least as well as the other side is exercising their imaginations. And exercising their, exercising our imagination, I had concluded that despite my earlier expression of some support, I was opposed, which is sort of tips to balance, I suppose. And I, I appreciate the fact that you and, and, and Mr. Sanders basically recognized where everything was headed with all of that and, and made the change that you did. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Todd?
Well, good evening, Mayor Wade, Vice Mayor Pinkston, City Council, City Manager.
Good evening.
What's up?
Good evening.
Oh, sorry about that. Good new year. Uh, my name is Todd Newmeyer. I'm the Director of the Human Rights Commission for the City of Charlottesville and here tonight to present our 2024 Annual Report summary. You've received the full report in your agenda packet. This is just a brief summary of what's in that report. Also, I'm here with Jason Melendez, who's Vice Chair of the Human Rights Commission, and he'll be here to answer any specific questions you may have around the commission's work in 2024. I'll be brief. This is just the general thing I'm going to go over this evening. We'll do a quick overview of the commission and the office and what they do. We'll highlight the work that we did in 2024, offer some observations and opportunities that emerged from that work, and we'll take a look at the Human Rights Commission's work plan for this year. As you know, the Human Rights Division is part of the city manager's office. It's enabled by the Human Rights Ordinance, and that forms the two bodies that make up the Human Rights Division, which is the Human Rights Commission and the Office of Human Rights. As you're familiar with the, the commission, it's a nine-member body that's appointed by council to address systemic issues, conduct community outreach, and ultimately advise council on, uh, issues related to human and civil rights. Office is currently staffed by four, uh, full-time employees. We address individual complaints of discrimination filed under the Charlottesville Human Rights Ordinance. We also conduct human, uh, community outreach in conjunction with the commission and sometimes individually as an office, and we provide administrative support to the commission. Just another snapshot of how our organizational structure works, again, under the city manager's office and specifically under the Deputy City Manager for Social Equity. There's four staff currently working in the office. I highlight this slide because this is basically the guide to the work that we do. Section 2-433 of the ordinance is basically the six major areas in which the commission and office engage in work around human rights. The report that's in your agenda packet is organized around these six items, as well as the summary tonight. The first one, being individual assistance, is the primary responsibility of the Office of Human Rights to receive individual complaints of discrimination filed under the Human Rights Ordinance. Gives you a brief snapshot of how many people, uh, we were serving in the past year. I think some of the most important things I can point out to you on this is that the work in, in, in terms of jurisdictional complaints nearly doubled, which means more investigative work, also more alternative dispute resolution work. What I'm examining now with that is how do we, how do we structure our office going forward in, in, in the anticipation of increased workloads and personnel requirements? So that's both an intake investigation, but also with regard to outreach to populations we may not be reaching, which brings me to the next point. This section of the ordinance, I kind of think about as our outreach section. You can see that we did a lot of outreach in 2024 and reached a lot of people. However, I think there's more work to be done there. While the commission does engage in outreach on its own, oftentimes it's in conjunction with the Office of Human Rights outreach. And so we're looking this year as how do we more actively engage in planning for outreach? And simply because the more outreach we do, the more community engagement we, we seek, that leads to better and more informed systemic impact work, especially around policy and legislative agenda recommendations. I think another thing to pull out of the data from this year is that we received a significant number of inquiries originating in Albemarle County, which may point to an opportunity for a conversation with the county about how they're thinking about human and civil rights in their jurisdiction. Again, all of this work, especially around the outreach, is a big task, requires staffing to engage both with the commission and the community in that regard and to help arrange any of that engagement. So again, we're thinking a lot about how do we structure our current four-staff office to maximize the community engagement and impact work going forward. One of the other responsibilities of the commission each year is to take a look at city policies and provide some recommendations to council on the city policies. For the past couple of years, they've been focusing on housing issues. And again, they're focusing on housing issues in 2025 with a little bit different twist this year, but we'll talk about that when we get to the work plan. I think one of the important things I want to point out to you as counselors is that this is an invitation for dialogue with the commission. When they send you recommendations, feel free to respond and give feedback if you have concerns or questions about any of those recommendations. The commission anticipates that and welcomes that. I think the other thing I want to point out here in terms of observations and opportunities is that providing, uh, well-informed and relevant recommendations to council takes a bit of community engagement and partnership, as well as some research. And as we think about, again, what does that entail? It entails a lot of staff time in, in support of the commission. So again, we are thinking about how do we best use our limited staff to do that work in increasingly better ways, but also how, what partnerships can we seek in the community to, to facilitate that and make it less of a burden on staff? Over the last few years, we've worked pretty hard on this federal work share bit. That is, uh, to remind you, seeking partnerships primarily with the Federal Fair Housing Office and the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. We focused mostly on the Federal Fair Housing Office under the Fair Housing Assistance Program. Did a lot of ordinance amendments to achieve what they call substantial equivalence in our ordinance to federal fair housing law. What I would say is that while that made the ordinance stronger, more comprehensive, and the likelihood of, of work share very strong in conversations with the director at the HUD office, I'll also say that I have not heard much in response to that in the last few months. And I know that there's been a lot of changes at the federal level in terms of how they're enforcing civil and human rights. So if a contract is presented to the city, I think it's really important to consider what are the impacts there? And is it still in the best interest of the city and community to enter that contract if it does come?
On, on that, on that point, obviously, that's something the city and, and you...
On, on that, on that point, obviously, that's something the city and you all have been working on for years to beef up, you know, our ability to do investigations into housing discrimination. So, basically, at this point, it would sound like there's no certainty they will even respond to get to that finish line?
It's my understanding that there's not very many staff people, if any, left at the federal office. So, while they were working on a contract, when we spoke with them back in March, we have not heard any more response from that. So...
I know the proposal, I can't remember if it was to cut HUD staff by forty or sixty percent.
It's significant, yeah. So, I, you know, I have some hope that it may continue in the future, but at this point, I don't think it's likely. With regard to the legislative program, that is another primary responsibility of the commission. Each year, they provide you with state-level legislative agenda recommendations, and they'll do so again this year. I think their process with this continues to improve using panel discussions during their meetings, also engaging with the public through polls, as well as they're going to do some more stakeholder meetings this year. Again, it takes a lot to organize that, so I just want to point out again that as we try to improve this process and make it more relevant and reflective of community needs, we're going to continue to think about how we restructure our staffing to effectively support that work. Last on that list of duties in the ordinance is a review of commission policies. This is primarily around the guiding documents that tell us how we do our work and how the commission does its work. So, that's the Human Rights Ordinance and the Human Rights Commission's rules and procedures. A lot of revisions happened during that process of preparing for those federal work shares that strengthened the ordinance and clarified some of the roles of the commission. Again, this is another one of those areas. When we do that work, I think it's important on an annual basis to take a look at all of the governing and guiding documents that reflect how are we supposed to do our work? But again, thinking about how do we, how do we prioritize staff time to make sure that that work gets done and is done effectively on an annual basis is another thing that's on our minds now. I'll briefly go over how we're thinking about work for the commission in this year, and you'll notice the dates, say, March twenty-five to February twenty-sixth. Their, their work plan year really runs between those dates because when new commissioners start that are appointed by council who are replacing commissioner terms that have ended, they start in March, and that's also the month that the annual meeting of the commission takes place. So, that's why those dates look the way they do. Again, housing access and stability across protected classes and economic status is the focus this year. Similar to last year, I think what, what's different about this year, as I pointed out in the other parts of the presentation, is that engaging community to better assess current and emerging needs is really a way forward for us. I think that's something we're really trying to prioritize going forward, just because the changing needs and the changing national and local landscape really, I think, cater to that right now. So, again, we'll hold some public expert panel meetings as well as some individual community stakeholder meetings to hopefully get you those legislative recommendations by August thirtieth, and then we'll adopt city policy recommendations for you sometime thereafter. Haven't quite decided on those dates yet. That's, that's all I have to give you in terms of a presentation here, but I'm open to questions. I think it's an important time to consider what is our role with regard to human and civil rights in our local community as things change at the local and, or at the federal and state level. I think it becomes a very critical question. And if you have questions, I want to invite Jason to come up as well, if you have any questions specifically about the commission's work.
I, I don't have any questions. I did read the full report, and you touched on a little, and I don't know the answer to it, but one of the things I'm definitely thinking about is particularly with, you know, the FHAP agreement. How do we approach that? Is it holding on to it and, you know, hoping that at some point there will be a different kind of administration and a different kind of leadership at HUD and we can return to that? Is it to abandon it if, you know, certain directives come or if it's just abandoned by HUD? I was just kind of wrestling with, I don't know the right approach. And something else in the report that really jumped out to me is how many cases that came to you were people who were needing assistance navigating CRHA because CRHA is the main issuer of vouchers in our community. And I don't know if that is the office of human rights role to take on that, but it jumped out at me. It's like, that is already a huge need in the community to, to help people navigate through CRHA. And I'm just thinking, again, with, you know, forty or sixty percent of HUD staff under proposal to get cut, I mean, that crisis is just going to become even greater. So, no questions, but those are kind of the two things that jumped out to me that I was like, I don't know what we do here, but it's a big problem.
Well, and if I can offer you just a short response, I think with, in terms of the Fair Housing Assistance Program, you know, it doesn't really change anything for us at the moment, right? We, the changes made to the Human Rights Ordinance stand, right? And it strengthens the ordinance, it strengthens the ability of the office to do investigations and the ability of the commission to, to review those findings and, and ultimately, if there's a finding of reasonable cause, that automatically leads to a civil proceeding in court, which is a powerful thing for us to hold. And that stands regardless of the federal work share. I think that if we were to receive a contract, a draft contract from HUD, it would just be very important to look at what are the terms of that contract? And that would be something we immediately share with the city attorney's office for that review. And in terms of navigation with the complexities of vouchers and all that stuff, yeah, it's a continual issue. I know that there are a number of mostly nonprofit and some city agency workers who are helping with that navigation, but it's, it's a big deal. It's a complex system. There's always increasing complexities when interacting with landlords and how they interpret vouchers. So, I don't have an answer for that either, and I would love to see, yes, maybe more discussion around that, especially as we think about how we engage with the community and hear more about what they need, maybe some recommendations will come on that.
Yeah, and just, again, not a question, but just wanted to shout out the work of the Human Rights Commission as well, just in terms of the work you've done on state legislation, which has made it into our city legislative packets. And I think hopefully over the next couple of years may actually, a lot of it may actually be able to come legislation if there's a different context. So, that work has, you know, made it, made its way into our legislative packets. And I think it's important to hold on to, I think we're the only locality in central Virginia with a human rights office that investigates housing and employment discrimination. One of the few in the state of Virginia, as well as the work of the Human Rights Commission, I think is pretty unique in terms of Virginia. And so, I hope we don't lose sight of the value of what you all offer because it's not just annual reports that you give us that we, you know, breeze through. Your work really does influence, I think, you know, our actions as city council and city government. So, thank you.
And Councilmember Payne, I apologize. I wanted to thank you for bringing up the housing navigation issue. I bring this up not to embarrass my colleague, but to share that over the past four years of us working together, that navigation is something that we continuously had discussions back and forth about how much can your Office of Human Rights do along with those other functions that you just highlighted of being, you know, the only office of human rights that does those investigatory services. Also in the audience, we happen to have our BRAC lead who can also share about the work that that nonprofit, along with other nonprofits serving our unsheltered community, does for that housing navigation internally. Home to Hope and Department of Human Services also does that navigation. And I'd hate to say it's still not enough. Same with our Department of Social Services. It's just a very complex topic, so I just wanted to share that is something that we actually talk about quite often of how much of that work can this office carry other offices as well as working with our colleagues to, you know, to figure out how we can better manage that, but it is a bit of a beast.
Yeah, definitely. And I know you all are involved in a lot of inform work. I got another phone call today about elevators and HVAC being down in Midway Manor, and I know there's issues like that all throughout the city that you also try to get involved in. So, anyway, I'm done. Thank you.
Yeah, could I ask a question about your slide? Two dash four three three A, individual assistance. You said that complaints nearly doubled?
Yes.
Any sense of what that, what's driving that?
I don't know. And part of that is, could be, I mean, there's a lot of different factors there. We did a lot of community outreach in 2024. We really ramped that up. That could just be meaning that more people know about it. I think also that we have been able to, with the addition of our intake and investigative staff, we didn't have them before. Now we have stable staffing. We can actually take complaints where we've had to refer to federal agencies before because we just didn't have the capacity to investigate every complaint that came in. So, there's a number of things that could be contributing to that is, one of the things we're trying to figure out, how do we track that? One of the things in our database that we do now, when we get a new contact, a new inquiry or complaint, we try to ask people, where'd you hear about this? Why, what brought you here? So, we may get a little bit of a sense of that after we do that for a year.
Mr. Melendez, you're, how often does the commission meet?
So, we are meeting on a monthly cadence for business meetings and work sessions of the first week of the month occasionally.
In your meetings, does, I guess there's a time and place for people to give comment and?
Yes, so we do have two public comment periods. They usually take place at city space, so super easy and convenient. We've got parking validation tickets for folks as well. Just come in, sign up for public comment. There's one at the beginning and one at the end of the meeting.
Good deal. Are you, is there, are you, are you having lots of people come every, every meeting or is it sort of sparsely attended or?
You know, I'd say it's been sparsely attended, but it has started to pick up recently. We've had a few folks come to some recent meetings and share some concerns. We've been able to actually, you know, facilitate some action on it.
Okay, great. Well, thank you.
Lloyd, do you have any questions?
Thank you.
I just have one.
Yeah.
For the complaints being doubled, I just, it might be helpful to go back to that slide if possible, because it says two hundred and eighty-eight unique individuals served, thirteen complaints opened, and eighteen hundred and forty-one incoming contacts. And then the next says, the next says complaints nearly doubled. Does that mean thirteen is the double number?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, so we use some terms of art in there. So, if you think about complaints as being the thing that's jurisdictional under the ordinance that we can investigate, use our alternative dispute resolution tools to address or investigate, that, that's what I'm talking about there. Inquiries are when people contact our office, but it's either non-jurisdictional for whatever reason, or it's a different issue that has, this is not a discrimination issue that we try to refer or address in some other fashion. So, that's the bigger number there.
Okay, and so, complaints going from like seven to thirteen, for example, is nearly doubling. But do the, the new inquiries, that kind of seems, because that seems like a relatively small number, just in the grand scheme of things, out of, you know, eighteen hundred and forty-one incoming?
Sure.
Contacts. Did that number change?
Let's see, that number is, I think it was higher, I'm trying to, I have to look at the data again. I could look it up if you really want to know or if I can follow.
Well, just, you know, is that scale also doubling or?
That was not.
Just as a little sketch.
That went up, it peaked a little bit like two years ago, and now it dropped maybe by a couple of hundred or so. It's kind of holding steady at around that two thousand range per year. But yeah, that, if you want an exact number, I can go through.
Yeah, well, no, I think that just kind of means, I mean, those mean different things, you know?
Yeah, indeed.
So, so if it's that complaints are, sorry, inquiries are staying about the same, but then more complaints are being handled, that feels more like a capacity expansion than a, you know, increase in bad things happening overall.
That could be true.
Yeah, I mean, who knows, who knows why?
Yeah.
But, okay, thank you for helping clarify what those numbers mean.
Sure thing.
Appreciate it. And thanks for all the good work that you're doing and the bracing you have to do for whatever comes next.
Thanks.
Yeah, it's been, you know, I've done a lot of work over the few years. Almost got it, the ordinance approved, I mean, we approved it by getting the certification or whatever from the feds. That, a lot of agencies and departments are going through that. They just have no one. I was talking with someone today about the airport and, you know, it's a lot of people have been working FAA for thirty, forty years of leaving. It's going to hurt, you know, a lot of airports that are looking to grow, expand, change. It's chaos, so, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
That is the city manager's report tonight.
Thank you. So, the next item on the agenda is some action items. We have a, a public hearing and resolution to appropriate additional funds for the VDOT, Virginia Department of Transportation, City of Charlottesville's project portfolio, twenty-three thousand, is that, no, it's twenty-three million. It's twenty-three million, three hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars is the first of two readings.
Good evening, City Council.
Good evening.
Mike Goddard, Deputy Director of Public Works, here to present the aforementioned resolution. Though it looks relatively complicated, it's actually a fairly simple resolution, I think. We're appropriating, with two exceptions, we're appropriating VDOT funding for VDOT projects that the city is administering. The two exceptions I'll point out, first is a transfer from the city's underground utilities project account. That's for the East High Street project in the amount of three million, ninety thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. And that's simply using our own funds to take care of some undergrounding of utilities, which was part of the project scope. The other exception is a transfer from the Parks and Rec Trails project account for the Bike Ped project at Washington Park in the amount of five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. Here to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, before we open up the public hearing, does council have any questions?
Just to confirm my understanding was accurate, having read through it, these include projects that you've modified in the past, but this essentially has no significant changes to any of these projects in terms of the design scope or what will be built?
No, there are not changes to the project scope. This is just a matter of bringing in the VDOT funding and making it available for us to spend.
Right. Thank you.
Um, no, thank you.
Okay, so now we'll open up the public hearing for this item. Would anyone from the public like to speak on the, this item, the appropriation of this fund? If not, I will close the public hearing and it would be on the next agenda for approval.
Before we move on, Mr. Goddard, a quick question. When do you expect the Bridge at Dairy Road project actually take place?
We're in design right now. I think construction should kick off in the fall of 2026 is what I'm planning.
Had somebody asked me about it yesterday. I thought.
Yeah, we plan to have a, a public conversation about that with the neighborhood associations adjacent.
Great, thank you.
So, do we want this on a consent agenda next time or?
I'm fine.
Consent agenda, okay?
Is there any expediency, like by waiting till the next meeting, does that slow down the process of construction at all? Okay. Thanks.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a resolution to approve a lease amendment for property located at one hundred fifth street northeast to the Blue Ridge Area Coalition for the Homeless. Oh, I was going to say Brenda.
Good evening. For the record, Brenda Kelly, Redevelopment Manager. In August 2023, you approved a lease agreement to allow BROC, that's the Blue Ridge Area Coalition for the Homeless, to lease a portion of space within city space. It was a two-year lease. Under that lease, they had an option or the ability to come forward and ask for a one-time, one-year lease renewal. That's what we're here for tonight, to ask for your approval. Shayla Washington is here with BROC, and this is a one-reading resolution following a public hearing.
Okay. Any clarification, questions or comments from council?
So, this is the one-time, one-year renewal. What happens next year?
We, they either have to find somewhere else to go or we would come back in front of you with a new lease.
Okay, thank you.
I will now open up the public hearing. Would anyone from the public like to speak on this agreement? Okay. If not, I will close the public hearing, and this is a one-time hearing. So, if we, if there's a motion to approve it, I will accept it.
I move the resolution to approve the lease amendment for property located at one hundred fifth street northeast to the Blue Ridge Area Coalition for the Homeless.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Okay, motion passes five zero. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing and resolution to amend the City of Charlottesville, Virginia CDVG and home fund awards for program year twenty-five, twenty-six, and mine amendment to the city's first year annual action plan, I mean, in amount of six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and two thousand, eight first year annual action plan, I mean, in amount of $6,835 and $2,859.47, and this is the first of two readings.
Good evening, council. Mayor Wade.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas. Anthony Warren, City of Charlottesville, Office of Community Solutions. It's my pleasure to come before you tonight and announce that we received a little bit more money, much to our surprise, for both the Community Development Lock Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnerships Program this year. The funding recommendations that were presented to you before and that were approved were based on our 2024, 25 funding levels. So the slight increase gives us an opportunity to come back before you for a little bit more discussion. So those are the two motions before you. While the numbers look a little bit larger than they might be in terms of our ability to allocate new funds, from the home side, I, I just want to remind you guys that the money comes as a pass-through to the Thomas Jefferson Area Home Consortium, and then it gets broken down in terms of planning administration funding, a special award for community housing development organizations, and then the remaining additional amount goes out to the six members of the consortium. So it doesn't turn out to be a lot of money, which is why on the home side, we recommended taking that small little balance of money and just adding it to the previously approved activity for the Piedmont Housing Alliance 905 Reeves Street project, which is going to take one residential house and convert that into as many as 12 long-term affordable housing units in partnership with the Piedmont Community Land Trust. On the CDVG side, it's a little bit more money. The priority for us was to take the money that was now available to us for public services activities. In the discussion that we had before, the majority of the applications come in for public services activities. We wanted to make sure that we maxed out those awards this time, which is why those three activities would receive an additional award if approved of 300, it's about $347 and, $341.75, the remaining balance to be added to the strategic development fund for future consideration by council. With that, I make myself available for any questions.
Any clarification, questions or comments from council?
My only comment would be, as we know the speed with which federal money can be or federal gifts can be rescinded, I would say that maybe we vote this through today.
I'm sorry?
With a four-fifths or greater vote, are we able to waive the second reading?
Yes, you are in this case.
Yeah, things are changing quickly in, in Washington.
Of course, the reality is that they're currently taking the position that they can claw it back regardless of whether we've spent it.
Yeah, let's see if we can.
It might make a little bit different if it's already been allocated. So, so, but that's.
Have we had the public hearing?
No, no, not yet, yep.
That's my only comment, just a suggestion for us.
So any other comments and, before I open up the public hearing? So I'll open up the public hearing, so is this for, for both A and B, the public hearing? Okay, so the public hearing is for both of the allocated funds. So any, any comments on this at all from the public? If not, I will close the public hearing, and for council consideration is to waive the second hearing to approve them both tonight. So it would be a three-part, one to waive the second hearing and then the, the two resolutions.
Do you know what were your concerns?
I just, I just wanted to make sure the attorney was on board with.
I'm sorry, looking at, so this is an appropriation of these funds per 2-98 of the city code that would require a second reading. I'm sorry, I've stepped out for a second to step back in. Yes, this would require two readings, and you cannot waive on appropriation.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, this one is not important, but I'll just say again, I think doing these two readings is good on our end for both compliance and transparency, and I just still come down there, but.
So this will be, can we put on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Next time?
Yes.
So be on the consent agenda for the next council meeting. Thank you very much. Then the next item on the agenda is a resolution to allocate $8,690,000 of capital improvements contingency fund, Mr.
Ms. Hamel's going to take care of it for me?
Good evening, council. Chrissy Hamel, City Budget Director. This is a second reading of a resolution to allocate some of the money from the CIP contingency fund. As we've discussed, this fund is basically generated from funds for prior year surpluses. And last, at the last council meeting, City Manager Sanders presented to you a PowerPoint that listed a bunch of what he termed community interventions, and this resolution basically is allocating 3.8 or just under 3.9 million dollars to those things that are listed on page 219 of your packet. In addition, there are a couple of what we're calling budgetary guideline or policy compliance issues that we are asking to use some of the surplus to address, such as the healthcare fund to offset the increased pension costs related to the Teamsters contract, et cetera. That's about 4.8, and that gets us to just under 8.7 million that we're asking you to allocate through this resolution. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
Did, did we have a restroom picked out yet?
No, we've looked at a few different models to see which one would work. We have to still figure out some measurements and connections.
Okay, so that's kind of an approximate allocation. Thank you.
Okay, any questions?
Actually, I do have one more.
Okay.
And our Bike Ped team isn't here, so this might be a James question. I was just, those of us who attend BPAC meetings know how this list was created, but I realized I should have asked this last week when we got the presentation. Can you just let the public know how the 34 urgent infrastructure projects were picked out?
Sure. That project list started out as a much larger list, but it was initially crowdsourced, if you will, from the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, as well as talking, as I understand it, to public safety officials, also based on our knowledge of, our team broadly's knowledge of the infrastructure of the city, emails sent to city council in particular and other sources. So it was a pretty kind of long and.
Broad-based community effort.
Broad-based community effort is a great set of words. Yeah, so looked at a lot of sources, and then they assessed it, and in particular, we're looking at what can we do within the funding available and within the timeframe that we're trying to accomplish these goals within.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely.
Is there a motion to?
Yeah, I would move the resolution to allocate $8,690,000 from the Capital Improvement Program Contingency Fund.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no.
No. And we discussed it last time, but I'll just state for the record, my opposition is in the 1.2 million for the Clean Team Program, which I think has good desires for creating it. I don't think it will accomplish the goal, and given the federal budget environment, I'm very cautious with how we spend money. And finally, anytime we outsource work, I'm very concerned that we're undermining our unionized workers, and it's almost guaranteed when we outsource, they will not be unionized. They will have lower wages, and they will have worse, potentially no benefits. So just want to state that for the record.
You said the clean what?
Clean team, the 1.2 million dollars.
That's the only part of this that I have reservations about as well, but I do support everything else, and knowing that it's a pilot, hopefully we'll have a better plan in place by the end of it. So with that, I'll, I'll say yes with that asterisk.
Yeah, so the motion passes four to one. Then the next item on the agenda is a resolution approving the Charlottesville Alamo Regional Jail renovation plan for finance for the CAC RJ Authority issuance of a 2025 bond and of the 2025 grant anticipation note.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, great to see you all again. My name is Courtney Rogers. I am with Davenport and Company. We're the financial advisors to jail authority. Some of you may remember I was here about 18 months ago when we did the interim financing for the jail. And what I'm going to do tonight is, as my colleague Stephen Geis is handing you the books, what we do is walk through the jail funding process. It's a little bit different than your normal bonding process. Also going to walk you through the two-part plan of finance and talk about the, our recommendation in terms of the funding approach for both the permanent financing and the grant anticipation note, walk you through the timetable and projected budgetary cash flows. Once I'm done, I'm going to let Colonel Coomer walk you through the bids and talk through the project itself and answer those questions for you. So I'm going to start out on page two, the jail funding process. As some of you may know, in the Commonwealth of Virginia, regional jails are eligible for a 25% reimbursement of eligible major costs for capital projects. So once the authority decides to undertake a project, it has to go through and put together a community-based corrections plan and planning study. That was done and approved by the State Board of Local and Regional Jails. So the request was, reimbursement was forwarded on to the General Assembly, which was approved and included in the governor's budget in 2023. So that reimbursement is, is basically set in stone at $11,689,250. And that, and that again, has been approved, so we're in good shape there. On the next page, it's a two-parter because we have to go out and do the interim financing, which of course we've already done. That was completed in December of '23. That money was used basically for preliminary design and engineering costs. Now we're on to the green section on page, I'm on page three here, at the bottom, the light green section, this is where we are now. This is the permanent financing and grant anticipation note part of the two-part plan.
Can we get? Can we get this to advance?
Todd, can you?
We either need to make sure you can ask Mr. Trail to advance, or there is your.
Here we go. So on page three, we're basically on to the interim financing part. I'm sorry, we did that part, that was closed in December '23. For those of you, at that point, we were using a planning interest rate of four and a half percent. We came in at 4.49, so that was basically right on the money. In terms of the term, it's set for 18 months, so it comes due in January of '27. That's going to be repaid, though, this summer with part of the refinancing of the, the permanent financing with the bonds. Of the permanent financing and the GAN, essentially, we are recommending to go through VRA to do the permanent bonds, and we're going to go through a bank loan for the grant anticipation notes. Essentially, again, that grant anticipation note, while the state has given the money in the budget, they don't pay it back until the construction is complete. So we have to go out and do an interim financing, in this case, we're calling it a grant anticipation because the grant will pay it off once the construction is complete. And so it takes a little bit of time after construction to work through all the paperwork at the state level. So we've set that, we're going to set that to where it gives us enough time to complete construction and then have the money come in from the state. The permanent bonds will pay the balance, the 75% of the project, as well as take care of the interim financing. A recommended approach for the permanent financing. Yes, sir.
A question, I've asked this in the past, but I can't remember.
That's right.
So the interest rate for the interim financing is higher than our municipal interest rate, but that only applies for the interim financing because of that very specific situation? Or that, does that also apply to the, the permanent financing?
So keep in mind, when we did the interim financing, we still had an inverted yield curve, so we had very short rates that were higher than actually longer rates. That's starting to correct itself a little bit, but with Fed not lowering rates, it's still a little bit on the high side, but not quite as high as it was. So I'll get to the moment, I'll talk about the GAN interest rate, but that's why you saw that higher interim financing rate, that 4.49. We're actually, right now, our estimate for the permanent financing, for the 25-year permanent financing is at a 4.50. That's our, that's our current estimate.
Okay, thank you.
But I'll get into that here in just a moment. Good question though. So on page six here, in terms of the permanent financing, we had a couple of different approaches. We could go to the banking world, send out a request for proposal, but there's a number of different reasons why we're not going to go that route, not recommending that route, and that is because right now, the banks are reluctant to give a fixed rate for 25 years. That's one thing, it's pretty important. And the rates that we've seen on the banking side, which kind of goes to your question, Mr. Payne, is that those rates have typically been higher than the bank rates. We've seen much better rates in the public market right now for long-term bonds. And so that leaves us with two other options. One is to have the authority issue the debt itself, which it has the ability to do, or go use our Virginia Resources Authority as the issuer. The reason I re-recommended there, you'll see it highlighted in green, to go through VRA, as I mentioned a moment ago, is because we would have to go out, the authority doesn't currently have bond ratings, it would have to go out and get its own bond rating, then it's going to look at each of the participants. Of course, you all in the county of Alamooral have triple A's, so they're highest ratings that we can get, but Nelson County doesn't currently have a bond rating, and so they would have to go through the process of actually getting a bond rating. We think they'd be a solid double A. They probably are not going to be triple A like you in the county, but with VRA, you're going to get basically with a blended double A plus rating, and so our recommendation is to go through that process. So as part of that, when we presented back to the, the authority back in March, we got the approval to put an application in. We did so early in May and have been through the process, and they have basically given us the permission to move forward with the, the process and go through their pool program. So we've been approved by them at this point, and are in good shape. As far as the GAN, our recommendation there is to basically go through the direct bank loan process. Essentially, we've put together a request for proposals, we'll send it out to various banking institutions. We put on this page back in May, when we sent you this presentation early in May, we were looking at two different options of going through the typical bank loan situation where we would have the authority as the issuer and also as VRA as a kind of issuer. We've decided that to go just through the authority process at this point. It's a new program for VRA, we're going to have to go through some more hoops, so we decided just to go through our typical process. We've been doing these jails over the years, back for many years, and this is the way it's been done. And one of the reasons we're going to do this as a not through the public market process is because we get better call provisions here and prepayment provisions. We want to be able to take this out as soon as we're done with construction and the money's available from the state, so we want that flexibility, even though we're going to set a certain final maturity on it. So, Mr. Payne, this kind of goes to your questions here about interest rates. So right now, our planning interest rate for the GAN is at 5% at three years. We hope that it'll come in a lot better than that. But just for running the numbers, we've been running the numbers now for several months, we just used a higher rate at 5%, knowing that we came in at five and, at four and a half before. For the permanent financing, we're looking at basically 5% planning rate, 4.97 you'll see there in the parentheses, but we've added 50 basis points for cushion. We don't know what will happen out there in the world. Obviously, right now, we've got a war going on overseas. That typically helps interest rates, but right now, they've actually been holding pretty steady. So we're estimating, though, right now, if we went to the market, we'd be about five and, four and a half percent for a long-term financing. That has three years of interest only, and then we've got 28, 25 years for a total of 28 years, 25 years of level debt service. And I'll go through the numbers on those on the final chart here in just a moment. Again, Colonel Coomer's going to talk a little bit about the actual project costs. We're still using 49 million as our projection, 12.1 million is the GAN. That again, covers the, the reimbursement from the state, which also baked into that number is some interest earnings. They basically will pay us back for some of the interest on the, on the actual GAN. So there's a lot of, I would call it machinations of numbers that go into this, so these are all very projected right now and subject to change. 36.9 million is what we're projecting for the permanent financing. And again, you'll see the allocations of debt service in just a moment. We're using the fiscal year numbers, which puts your number at 39.54% based on the calculations from the jail authority. So in terms of calendar, where we are now, so as I mentioned, we spoke to the authority back in March of 3022. back in March of thirteen, walked through this presentation with them, um worked with Bond Counselors, Anne Anderson, to put together the uh the application for the summer pool. We uh we met that deadline May first, and uh and of course, during that time, the invitation for bids was sent out and received back uh just recently at the end of May. Uh so here we are now, while we're a little bit behind from, we were originally supposed to be with at your previous meeting. Um we were talking to you tonight, we'll be in front of the uh Almora County Board on Wednesday evening and then Nelson next week. Um and so, once we get through those uh processes, we'll uh we'll be uh we'll move on to the award from the authority on Ju- uh later in June, and then the tentative vet deadline, basically, for all these local approvals is June thirteenth. Um and so we're trying to meet that deadline so we can get all the approvals in.
June thirteenth was a couple days ago.
I'm sorry. They gave us approval to to co- they understand that we're behind by a couple of weeks, so they gave us a okay, as long as we get, once we get the Nelson approval through, we're in good shape. So um the second timetable is talking about the GAN. Again, we're gonna get that, uh we got that RFP out today. Um we're gonna get the responses back July second, um and then we're going to uh come back to the board on July tenth for their approval to uh to move forward with that GAN. The bond sale is projected for the week of July twenty-first. We have to know the GAN information before we go to the permit financing, because they both work in tandem. Um and so we'll have that for the June, July twenty-first week of pricing. We'll close um thereafter and then uh have the closing of the bonds uh August fourth, so basically about two, three weeks after the bond sale. So what does the debt service look like? Um it changed a little bit from what we showed you eighteen months ago, uh only because interest rates had gone up a little bit in our estimates. Um but what you'll see there, in twenty twenty-six, the total per- uh projected for the member jurisdictions is just shy of one-point-nine million, and then it's two-point-five million for the full year, twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Um that is the projected debt service on the GAN, along with the projected debt service on the permit financing. You'll see that the solid line basically is where the interim financing is projected to be taken out, the GAN, and the twenty-nine uh twenty-twenty-nine will be the first year of full principal interest on the bonds, which is two-point-six million, a little shade over two-point-six million. Um you'll see the projections broken out between the uh the different participants. You'll see yours there in the first column, next to the dotted blue line, uh roughly about a million dollars a year debt service uh once we get to the permanent uh debt service. Um one thing of note, a little asterisk by twenty twenty-six, um the jail authority is gonna use some interest earnings from the proceeds of the bonds when they're sitting, waiting for the construction um bid uh project invoices to come in. They're gonna use some of the interest earnings to downsize your seven-hundred thousand dollars for this year uh for your for budget purposes. So, Mr. Mayor, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. As I said, Colonel Coomer's here, he's gonna talk a little bit about the uh, which I know you all wanna talk about, hear about the bids and things like that. But as far as financing goes, I'm happy to answer questions where I can take them once he's finished.
Yeah.
How much do you anticipate the interest downsizing that seven-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars?
Stephen, you don't remember what that number, uh what's what is their debt service with the interest earnings that uh the the jail estimate?
The chills, the chills accounting folks worked that out, so they were doing those estimates.
Thank you.
Are there other questions on financing while he's pulling pulling it up? If if not, we can um get that, you know.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good evening. So I'm here to answer any questions. There's been a lot of changes in the process over the last several weeks when the when the bids came in, so I'll kind of start back when we got the bids and kind of tell you where we are now. Uh May thirtieth, as you know, we got all our bids in. We had six pre-qualified bidders, we received five bids. The bids range from fifty-three million all the way up to seventy-six million. The lowest bidder was English Construction. We have been working with them since to reduce the scope. Uh at that moment, we chose then not to come back to ask for more money to complete the project as it was. We chose to work within the budget and reduce the scope. That's what we've been working hard actually the last several weeks. I can't tell you now, I I know there's some concern about that the final project is not fully approved. I can say that as of last Thursday afternoon, we had about ninety-five percent of the project is, the scope is now finalized, we're on the final five percent. That scope now is, for the most part, tearing down of the oldest portion of the nineteen-seventy-five jail, that has received no renovation. We're going to leave the middle section alone, it was to be renovated. That did see, receive some renovation back in two thousand, so it is more up-to-date than the current section we're looking at tearing down, because it is also in the middle of the jail. It is the most disruptive to operations, both to the inmates and to staff and to visitation and to services we provide, so we're gonna focus on this section where we can move the exits out, to another section of the jail, turn that section over to the contractors with minimal disruption to the services provided to our inmates or our staff and to the citizens. Now, with the, that section we're gonna tear down and rebuild, in there will be a total of sixty-five general population beds that are fully compliant with DOC standards. They're all single bed, single occupancy, they're all trauma-informed design. There'll also be an additional two mental health units, seven beds each. There'll be four mental health offices, two for our current staff and two for visiting staff, both mental health providers who come in and provide services. There'll be additional office space for staff, there'll be addition, we will double the visitation room, it'll also be private, as opposed to large rooms we currently use, a new lobby, and then three brand-new recreation areas. And this entire area will be trauma-informed design, hundred percent to code, and ADA accessible for all staff. And we think we meet most of the things that the community identified, the community-based correction plan identified, my staff, and that we've been talking about now for almost five years. Most of those things will be accomplished. What won't be accomplished? We will not be removing the bar grate right now from that nineteen-seventy-five middle portion, that will stay. Eight cells will remain with bar grate. We have eight downstairs don't have bar grate. Uh while the toilets and mechanical and plumbing in those sections won't be part of the renovation, the HVAC will be part of the renovation. It's at five percent, we're still working on, trying to figure out exactly what amount of money is left over and exactly what the HVAC plan is gonna look like for that nineteen-seventy-five portion, so that will be achieved to some degree. Staffing area phase two in the middle has been taken out. There was some new office space for shift commanders, some new uh attorney visitation space was done there, a new break room for staff, and a new fitness room for staff was going to be moved, make way for another classroom for inmates. We're gonna leave that room where it is, and we'll add the classroom sometime later in the future. So a little bit, everything was given up in the renovation portion. We are confident as of Thursday, we will bring it into the budget that we originally set.
Any questions?
I'll just make a comment. I was there when the bids came in, um and it was a frustrating moment to to see all the work that had happened, and and we think that the main cost driver for exceeding the budget are are the tariffs. There's a lot of metal in this project, um and so um that was deeply frustrating, but I've been, you know, I'm, this is the sort of work that I do. I was, I've been very impressed with you and um Bill Downey and the architects that you have and engineers of trying to right-size this project, given the fact that we aren't increasing the budget. Um and I think that what you all have decided, the choices you've made, seem like thoughtful, reasonable ones. I think everyone realizes that at some point, you know, a number of years down the future, we'll have to go back and make some renovations in the spaces that we're not touching. But I I just wanna commend you and your staff and the and the professionals that have been associated with it. I think y'all have done a a good job of being nimble and responding to um a very difficult pricing climate.
So did you?
And I also wanted to just mention that, you know, the board, um the ACRJ, ACR, ACRJ board has been um briefed on all these things and supportive as well.
And I will be going back July tenth with the um final scope of work for the board to approve as well, and with the final budget as well.
And to be clear, what you're looking for tonight is basically the approval of the the bond capacity to go out to the VRSA, the VRA and um and have access to that.
It is. If if July is none, if the bids come back and the board does not approve the final scope, the final budget, the final what they see, to.
Yeah. But you need this approval for to go ahead and do now, so that we meet.
We need this for VRA as well as to go ahead for the GAN.
To be able to meet the bond sale, otherwise you lose six months or something.
Otherwise, we gotta, right, it'll be November.
Right.
Before we can come back.
So, did you have?
Yes, sir. To answer your question, um is a hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. So you're, instead of seven thirty-six, it'd be about a hundred and a hundred and eighty, just under two-hundred thousand.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And then that was provided to your budget team. They've got the exact numbers.
And that's just our portion, that's not.
That's just your portion, yes, ma'am.
So any questions or discussion on this before, will y'all finish your your presentation?
We're done.
Yes, sir.
So.
Any questions?
Just a couple of quick questions. How, is there any chance that if tariffs, uh steel tariffs come down, that the the cost could be adjusted?
This is a lump-sum bid, so when we sign, those prices are what they are. So if they go, they escalate, we're stuck with that cost. If they save some money because tariffs come down, they.
Okay, so there's no, there's no vet, no.
We decided that was the the safest way, so we are not unhooked, have to come back later with more money.
Right.
We know what we're going into regardless of the climate two years from now.
And i- if all goes well, uh on the financing side of things, when would construction start?
September fifteenth. You wouldn't see shovels hit the ground necessarily, but September fifteenth, materials started to be ordered, the construction would be on-site to start making some.
And anticipated completion date would be?
About two years from that date, depending on the, because some of the scope, although it's been limited, it'll be um simultaneous. We're able to chomp off a large portion of that area in, hopefully. That will also save some costs on construction administrative costs as well.
That's fine, thank you.
Brian, did you?
Nope.
Michael, you have any comments or questions?
Um, I mean, I think you covered it, so it's my understanding, you know, to the concern that we're voting on it without fully knowing the um scope or the cost at this point, even though you're gonna try to get to as close to that original cost as possible. That is driven by, what what is the deadline by which it has to be decided on our end before you have to wait that six months for um issuing any bonds? Is that, am I understanding correct, the reason for voting before we know the final cost or scope?
One thing I'll point out is you're you're voting on a not-to-exceed number tonight, so we cannot go above it without coming back to you, just so you know that part. But you wanna answer this.
But as far as the bond sale goes, if it weren't, we can't come back later because the deadline will pass for the bonds, the summer bond sale, which that means we jump into the fall bond sale.
Right. There's a point in time which they're, they've got, they mail the POS, just like if you were doing your own bond sale, they have to mail POS for the other participants, and they're not gonna wait on this.
So what happens if we lose the price of English?
Uh it it's only due for ninety days, I believe. Uh the price says they are worth the backup to pity you.
So that that's the reason, Michael, for moving forward now.
And the other concern, we have, the reason it started several years ago, we got to learn this now, is because our population has dropped significantly. We are now on the increase. I believe we have, we've bottomed out, we probably hit bottom back in January, February this year, and our count, daily population's up about twenty percent. We are now frequently going over three hundred, we haven't seen three hundred since twenty-twenty-three, but we're now frequently over three hundred throughout the week. So our our timeframe to finish this without having to move inmates someplace else is slowly shrinking. I do believe we're still squeezed in, I have no idea what tomorrow brings, I can't make any promises, but I do believe we are now back on the upswing. Now, we are still historically low, but I believe we hit our bottom about six months
What is driving the increase?
Uh a little bit of everything. We've looked at, thought there was a rise in certain property crimes or drug offense and so forth, it's just a little bit more of everything. Nothing specific to point out.
So, um are you, do you have more? Um you just said you wouldn't be able to exceed the amount suggested today without coming back to us.
Right.
Which means there potentially could be a scenario where you come back to us.
No. Uh it is a budget that, once we sign it, like I mentioned earlier, it is a lump-sum. They agreed to do the work for this cost regardless of material costs go up. There are contingency funds also in there as well, and we also have a good project manager to make sure that as, if those opportunities come up to increase it, we can um kind of go back and look at the scope at that time, too. So lots of ways to keep it within budget.
I was talking about the financing vehicle itself. We can't, we have a not-to-exceed number in terms of what we can borrow at VRA and the GAN, and so we can't go above those numbers.
I see, okay. Um, we, we got a list briefly, uh or I mean, earlier, a couple days ago, about some of the changes that you just mentioned, including um the removing the workout room for staff. Um, do the staff currently have a workout room?
They do, but that space was being moved from where it is, which is in the center of the jail, up to the front of the jail, which is um a non-secure area, and in the secure area, which would be more classroom space, so they've been converting the classroom space to meet the community-based corrections plans requirements.
Okay. The reason why I ask that is because when, a year, two, years, a year and a half ago, when we were doing the presentations about the Plans A, Plan B, Plan C, and Plan C and a half, um it was kind of broken down into the wish list, a certain number of essentials and a certain number of essentials. And when we got the renderings of the plans recently, it was, you know, big shiny gym for the staff, that didn't seem super essential to inmate welfare, big shiny lobby, that still doesn't seem very essential to inmate welfare, and that's still on the ticket. So I was glad to see that um the the locker room was has, was one of the things that got cut to right-size the project to the to the current budget. Um, I'm, I'm still not convinced that everything that is on this list is the most essential, especially if we're missing some of the plumbing and that potentially we need. Um, and that this was, since the beginning, it was kind of set up to highlight the wish list and not really focus on the the kind of more pared-down versions, which could address certain things um to make the conditions in the jail um less bad. Um, so this whole kind of process, we've heard from People's Coalition, we've heard from um all kinds of people who don't want the city to spend their money this way. We have heard from nobody who wants the city to spend their money this way. Um, and so I I understand wanting the conditions of the jail to be better and that there is some amount of renovation that is worthwhile. I'm still not sold on it being this amount of project.
I do want to be clear that the plumbing issues and so forth will be addressed, and the maintenance budget we have will now stretch further because the portion that we otherwise would have been spending money, the oldest nineteen-seventy-five portion, will now be new, so funds will normally allocate.
So the middle section you said wasn't gonna be part of this renovation would just be handled throughout the course of.
Correct.
Regular operations.
Right, so maintenance funds that would normally have been spent over here, which is now new, those funds can now be shifted over here. So those things will still be addressed, it should be longer, it won't be under this package, just to be clear.
Well, that's good to hear.
Absolutely.
Other questions or comments on this?
I wanted to comment a little bit. Um, yeah, I I've spent a lot of time in the jail, uh visiting a lot of clients in a lot of different parts of the jail, and the need for its renovation has long been apparent. Um, I find that that this process of the jail board doing its job and then coming to us, giving us not very many options, is is frustrating. On the other hand, I'm not in a position to sort of second-guess the construction efforts and the costs and and what what makes sense. I will say that overall, the the goals of the project, I think, are are worthy in that that number one, we'll take care of the 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 problems that are most serious, some of which actually have health consequences. Uh, we will uh pretty much eliminate, and I guess it will eliminate, double bunking and everything will be single-bunked, and there will be, it'll now meet the building code in a whole lot of different ways that it doesn't now meet the building code. Uh, it'll allow for more classroom space, purely personal interest, more lawyer visitation space. Um, people might think I'm just being self-serving in that respect, but I can tell you, if I can't get out to see my clients, they can't see me. Uh, so that that's a real problem. The, all of the different things that are being uh offered as goals are goals that I that I favor and I support, and I would have been happy to support the uh the the option that was presented to us, that would have been presented to us last month. option that was presented to us, that would have been presented to us last month, the last meeting, uh, at the, at the price that, that was being extended. Uh, unfortunately, the bids didn't come in that way, so we can't. I'm not going to sit here and say, well, I think, uh, though the way that I personally would downsize the project is this and this and this and take out that and, and increase something over here. Uh, it's not, it's certainly not my competence and it's not my place. I, I basically, I have confidence in the, the board and the administration to spend our money wisely. Uh, granted, people may disagree about whether we ought to be spending money on jails at all, but we're required to have a jail. We're required to have a jail of a certain capacity. This doesn't increase the capacity. Uh, it allows for a lot of good things to happen, and I, I'm, I frankly think it is going to be in the best interests of the folks that are my clients, who spend time there, is going to be in their best interest that this go forward. And so I'm going to look for it.
And, um, you know, for someone who has been in the jail many times to teach job readiness classes and work on resumes and help the, um, residents, um, for their exit, um, back home, I saw the need to for the renovations and, and we are able to, to support, at least I am in my mind, to support this and still support other initiatives like housing, um, like school, like, like schools. We have, um, increased the budget for the schools, we have, um, just approved the budget for, um, Buford Middle School or Charlottesville Middle School. So I'm going to su- support this as well because I, I believe we, we need it. Um, is there any other discussion on this? If not, can I get a motion, please?
I move the resolution of the City Council of the City of Charlottesville, Virginia, approving the execution and delivery of a support agreement or agreements with the Alamo, Charlottesville Regional Jail Authority for the issuance by such authority of its jail facility revenue bond and jail facility grant revenue anticipation notes.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
Okay, the motion passes three to two. Thank you.
Thank you all, ma'am.
The next item on the agenda is a resolution to amend and reallocate tax and rent relief budgets. It's the first of two reading, Chrissy?
Good evening, Council, Chrissy Hamel, Director of Budget, thank you. Um, this, um, uh, resolution tonight is something that we talked about during the budget work sessions, um, during the twenty-six budget development. Commissioner Divers spoke to you at that time about, um, how some of the different tax relief buckets had, uh, changed around, uh, largely due to the efforts of his office to make sure that we are getting people to the right, um, aid. And when we pass the budget ordinance each year, we're, we're doing this in a year in advance, and so, um, when we write the ordinance, we basically write it and ask you to approve it, um, at a sum sufficient, which we estimate. And so this, uh, agenda item is basically coming back to you to give you the final, um, for where we landed. Um, it's reallocating some dollars that were previously budgeted, but also, um, it's adding a little more as we were able to, um, give a little more aid than we anticipated. Um, I will one note, uh, Commissioner Divers pointed out to me that I have these reversed. So in the actual resolution where it says budget increases, those are actually decreases, and where it says budget decreases, those are actually increases. And, uh, Madam Clerk, I'll get your revised resolution. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, or Commissioner Divers is here as well.
Okay. Um, are there any questions or clarifying questions on this? Nope. Uh, and this is not a public hearing, but it is first of, um, two readings, so, um, do we want to put this on the consent agenda, um, for the next meeting?
Sure.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on agenda is, um, LLC entity creation authorization resolution, West Hay, West Haven Phase One and Sixth Street Phase Two redevelopment projects. Mr. Williams?
Yes, good evening, Council, members of the public. Antoine Williams, Housing Program Manager. Council has asked to adopt two resolutions authorizing the CRHA to form one or more legal entities. These entities are to support project financing and, uh, the development for specifically resolution, let me get this correct, Resolution A pertaining to Sixth Street Phase Two and Resolution B, West Haven Phase One. Uh, as part of these efforts, CRHA must establish single-purpose entities, uh, to serve as ownership and/or management entities in order to comply with IRS, HUD, and Virginia housing requirements. Um, under Title Thirty-Six, Section Nineteen, Subsection Twelve of the Virginia Code, CRHA may only form such entities with the prior approval of City Council. On June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, CRHA had got approval for the Board Commission to, um, form, formation for West Haven Phase One, and on September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, they had got approval for Sixth Street Phase Two. At this time, Council has asked to ratify these resolutions. Uh, we also have on hand, uh, Mr. John Sales, the Executive Director of the CRHA, and we're with that, I'll pause for any questions.
Any questions, um, at this, at this point down here?
Makes sense to me.
We've got, just one question that we've gotten from the public, um, in the past about this. Why, um, have it be two entities instead of one? If you could just break down the rationale for that?
So each, uh, each phase has to have its own entity, uh, because most likely the investors for each entity, uh, will be separate and different. And so, we can't guarantee the investor for West Haven will also be the investor, uh, for Sixth Street, uh, Phase Two. And so each entity has its own entity and CRHA is the owner of that entity, but it's like a point zero one percent ownership of the entire development itself. Thank you.
And your registration fees cost fifty bucks, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we put this on the consent agenda, is that, is that?
Yep. Yep, it seem, doesn't seem like it's, um, on both, both rather resolutions, um, on the consent agenda for the next meeting. So, um, no other discussion on that, we're into general business by motion to approve an employment agreement. Oh, um, is, Chris?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Chris Cullen, and the City's Director of Finance. Uh, this agenda item is the approval of an employment agreement, appointing William David Milton as the Charlottesville City Assessor. Um, as you know, Mr. Davis, uh, Mr. Jeff Davis, the City's current assessor, announced his retirement effective at the end of July, twenty twenty-five. Uh, we've engaged in a, uh, hiring process, uh, through the city's, uh, normal hiring processes. Uh, this one's a little unique in that it does require, by city code, uh, requires the appointment of the assessor by, uh, City Council. Uh, it's with great pleasure that, uh, myself and Mr. Sanders unanimously, uh, recommend for selection, uh, William David Milton, uh, goes by David, uh, as the City Assessor. Uh, he's currently the commercial appraiser for the city's, uh, Real Estate Assessment Office. He's been with the city for about seven years, and in addition, brings a, a wealth of experience from some prior, uh, stops along his career, uh, doing mostly commercial appraisal, but also having some, some residential experience, uh, with Alamo County. And again, this is a unanimous, uh, recommendation. Uh, Mr. Milton is with us this evening, if you have any questions, uh, you'd like to ask him, but, uh, we recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions for David? If not, um, can I get a motion to, um-
So I want to let the public know that we already interviewed him in closed session, so we did have an opportunity to ask our questions already.
As did I.
Yes.
I move approval of the attached employment agreement, appointing Milton as City Assessor.
Second.
Second. Okay, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. So, um, the next is a confidential, confidential settlement agreement, um, and, um, so is there a motion to, to approve that? We've been briefed on it.
I'm willing to approve.
Second.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes five to zero. We're now at the opportunity for the, um, second community matters, would anyone like to speak?
Before I speak, I'm going to say to you three, two things. One, Lord, it's our money, it's the people's money, not your money. You three, I can tell my grandkids that you're the reason why they still have to pay for a jail. Okay. Um, it's no use me introducing myself, y'all know who I am. Uh, tonight, what I make- Tonight, I want to make one thing clear. We still here. We're not going anywhere. The People's Coalition will still be here to hold all y'all accountable. Because if no one holds y'all accountable, y'all do what y'all just did to the city. We're deeply, we deeply disappointed of council for those move, for, we deeply, we deeply disappointed that council moved to choose to go forward with the jail expansion, especially when we are voting on a promise in that unexpected, um, scope. The People's Coalition did not support this expansion. Many community members and organizations spoke out loudly and clear against it. Over one hundred individuals and almost twenty organizations signed on to say, we need care, not cages. We thank everyone who organized, who spoke, who signed a letter, who showed up. Your voices matter. Your work matter. Even though this vote didn't go our way, our movement is not over. We're building power. We're growing stronger and we'll be back. It's not over until it's built. Remember that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you first for listening to me for so many times. I appreciate that. Um, I, it's come to my, our attention that, um, there was an email, um, that was sent from Superintendent Coomer to the Board Chair and the Board Vice Chair. Um, and I learned about that at the, uh, twelfth meeting last Thursday, but the rest of the board didn't get it. So when the board was talking about it during the meeting last Thursday, they did not have this email. And apparently, you all got it even before the board got it. So you all got it on the eleventh, and they didn't get it until either during the board meeting or after the board meeting. The only two people from the board who got it were you, Vice Chair of Pingston and the Chair. I want to point out one paragraph in this email that contradicts what, uh, Superintendent Coomer just said. I believe it's the second paragraph, the last sentence. Any remaining funds in the budget will be directed to removing the antiquated special management units and replacing and improving the HVAC and plumbing in the remaining nineteen seventy-five portion. Those antiquated segregation units are disgusting, and there are people in them now. So this project is going to be a big fancy jail, and the people who are in there are going to suffer consequences because the renovation is going to be delayed for maybe not even starting in two years, until two years, until the construction's over. This is disgraceful. I thank you for listening.
Thank you. Um, would anyone else like to speak? With no other, um, discussion, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Thank you.